Hello, Phil.
Will everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with every justice for all.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the regularly scheduled meeting of the Doylestown Township Board of Supervisors for November 21st, 2023. Before we met in this regular meeting, the board met an executive session to discuss a lawsuit, no action was taken, and a personnel matter which was disposed of. To begin, we have a presentation from, well, Chief Logan, do you want to introduce the presentation?
Yes. In October of this year, Sergeant Stitch received instructor certification to conduct active shooter training to citizens and businesses. Sergeant Stitch, he's been a member of the Central Bucks Special Response Team since 2016. And during his time there, he's assisted with conducting active shooter training for swarmed law enforcement personnel. With the completion of this instructor certification, he hopes to expand the active shooter training to the community by providing training to civilians and business owners. Sergeant Stitch is here this evening and would like to provide some basic information on the training itself and the registration process, if you may.
Regis Stitch?
Sarge?
Thanks, Chief. So, schools and businesses in the township specifically have been asking about training or tools that they can have to better prepare themselves for the unfortunate circumstances of an active shooter. Currently, all we had was what we do in law enforcement. Through the Texas University, State University and Alert, they provide increased training to law enforcement so that we can then go out into the communities and provide training of what a civilian should do in the event to prepare or what to do when an active shooter event happens. So, we're going to use Crime Watch for registration. My email's on the flyer. That's on our Crime Watch page right now for future dates when we get set up. If you have any questions, my email's on that flyer. It's a free class. It's two hours. For schools, businesses, if what the goal is to get it into either, if you want it for school, try and cater it towards a school or towards a business. Topics will be the history, the prevalence of active shooter events, the civilian response options, medical issues, considerations for conducting drills as well. So, thank you.
Thank you. Good?
Thank you.
I'd like to call up Blythe Kelly. Has a special presentation. A brief addition to the minutes, I mean, to the agenda.
Good evening. Ryan, on behalf of the Park and Rec Board, I'd like to thank you for your time, your support, and your guidance. We appreciate all you have done, not only for our board, but also for your leadership in our township and your service to our community. I wish you much success in your future endeavors. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Blythe. Okay, any public comment with regard to agenda items only? Hearing none, seeing none. Let's go on to the announcements. The next meeting of this board is Tuesday, December 19th at 7:00 PM. We're going to be closed on November 23rd and the 24th for Thanksgiving celebrations. This is Veterans Family and Military Families Month, so let's not forget that November is ending, but let's not forget that our veterans' families still live with us. Let's remember them. Capital Campaign raffle is continuing. We have $100 per ticket. We're only selling 150 tickets, and there are three great prizes. This is available at the back of the meeting room, so please take one. The drawing is going to be, I mean, December 19th at 7:00 o'clock at this, at our next meeting. Drop-off spot for Bucks County Housing Group Food Supply Collection is here at the Township Building Monday through Friday, 8:30 to 4:30, and we're going to be collecting food for the Bucks County Pantries, Housing Group Pantries from, well, yesterday until the 1st of January. This, and Sergeant Stitch just delivered us the civilian response to active shooter events. The free training, as he said, is at J. Stitch, Doylestown PA. Get more information. So, please look into that. And finally, Township E News, sign up, doylstownpa.org. It's sent every Friday at 4:00. Next item on the agenda, approval of the minutes from the Budget Work Session of October 17th, 2023. Everyone had a chance to review the minutes?
Yes.
Any corrections? Nothing. Motion to approve, please.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Five and O. Next, the minutes approval for December, excuse me, Tuesday, October 17th, 2023, at 7:00 PM, regular meeting. Everyone had a chance to review the minutes?
Yes.
Any corrections, changes? Hearing none. Is there a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Sadly, we have a, well, happily or sadly, we have a resignation by our very own loved Janine Mitchell from the Environmental Advisory Council. She's asked for, she's, she's telling us she's resigning for all the good reasons, and so we have to accept a resignation with regrets. Is there a motion to accept a resignation?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye. I would like to make a comment, though.
Please do.
So, Janine Mitchell is a true community hero, and I'd like to thank her for her exceptional contributions. As a master gardener, she's transformed our surroundings with a native plant demonstration garden, emphasizing the importance of sustainable landscaping. Her role as a master watershed steward showcased her dedication to preserving local ecosystems. Janine's leadership as the former chair of the Environmental Advisory Council elevated environmental initiatives in our community. For organizing the Coots Elementary Bird Walk, to numerous other impactful projects, she has consistently demonstrated her commitment to a greener, more sustainable future. It's no surprise that Janine received the 2023 Doylestown Township Unsung Hero Award. While her efforts may go unnoticed by some, those who have witnessed her passion and impact know that she's truly deserving of this recognition. Janine Mitchell is an inspiration, and our community is better for her tireless dedication to her environmental stewardship. I personally am sorry that she is no longer going to be a member of the EAC, but I'm thrilled to know that she's not going too far. Thank you, Janine.
Yeah, thanks. Thank you. That was well said. Solicitor, you have anything?
I have nothing now, but I have some comments later in the agenda on several items.
Township engineer?
Nothing now, but I will have something later.
Chief?
Nothing at this time.
All right, Director of Operations, you're up.
2023 Road Program Part II Change Order Number One. I'm going to ask Mr. Torpe to speak to this item. Change order number one was, we have the ability to add Ridge View Lane to our current road program and get it in before the end of the year. In order to go in and do the remediation needed to the road, the change order will be in the amount of $57,128. So, tonight, I'm asking for a motion to award Change Order One so that we can include Ridge View Lane as part of the Part II program for 2023 road paving.
Okay. I'll make the motion.
I'll second. Any questions, concerns? All in favor?
Aye.
Five and O.
Thank you.
Thank you.
2023 Tree Pruning and Takedown Change Order, Change Order Number One. We had additional, identified additional hazardous trees that need to be removed in our open space that would cause a potential problem to adjacent property owners, property or homes. There's three trees identified in Change Order Number One. That totals for $7,950. That would go on to Joseph McElvein Tree and Lawn Service contract. I'm asking for the board's approval for Change Order Number One, please.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Any questions, concerns? All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Five and, five and O.
I'll have Mr. Torpe speak to the Bike Hike Trail Maintenance Change Order Number One as well.
For this, this change order, we are doing trail maintenance, essentially, some of the areas where we're pulling the trail completely up and working on the base. In other areas, we're just able to scratch and redo asphalt. In one area along Iron Hill Road, we discovered that there's, it's a very, very wet area, which indicates why we had to assume a rebuild. Unfortunately, we need to do a little bit more. We had to add some additional stone and some geotextile fabric in order to make sure that it's going to be good for the next 20 years. So, this change order is to do a drainpipe, some additional reinforcement, and additional stone, and additional labor to do that work. So, what I'm asking for tonight is Change Order Number One for the 2023 Bike and Hike Trail Maintenance Paving Project in the amount of $16,950.
Questions?
I have a question. So, and Danny may be able to help us well. So, when we do our trails and we're identifying the locations of those trails, obviously, we're going to run across swales or different things like that. And the maintenance piece of it is a part that I've been forcing to this Board of Supervisors that I feel we need to have a better control over. So, with this, obviously, we're fixing it, but are there ways to identify in advance before we start putting these trails in? I mean, I'm just looking for ways that we can be ahead of this.
So, because it's been a while, if, I can't speak to historically if there's been trail maintenance, but we identified the worst areas, which is what we started this year. This area is actually in a low-lying flood zone that's trail goes through. So, we knew that it was going to be wet, but we didn't realize how wet it was until we got the asphalt up and we started to put down the new stone. And then, as you're driving, construction vehicles on it to try and get it to compact, we had what's called pumping, and essentially, that's because you have a lot of groundwater. So, the way to fix that is, is you overexcavate, you put down some geofabric, additional stone, and then the additional stone with the compaction helps to get it a good solid base. So, that's what happened for this instance. Now, it could happen again, but unfortunately, we all, we often don't know or realize until we kind of get underneath and see what's going on. Originally, we had thought that it was a lot of tree root damage, but it turned out to be both tree root and the active water. So, we also created a pipe so that we can actually get where some of the water is fed from, like some of the ponds, and maybe a natural spring in that area. So, we have a pipe that we also put in that will allow that water hopefully get through quicker as opposed to sitting under the trail.
Okay, great. And is the trail going to be the same width? Will it be wider?
In that area, it'll be the same width, which I think is, it's like eight and a half, nine feet.
Thank you. I figure where we are.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you.
I'll second.
All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, five and O. Next?
As you know, we participate in the state contract to, to purchase sodium chloride road salt. It's from the Co-Stars contract. So, we, we notified the state this year that we were going to participate in the 2324 statewide contract. That contract has been let, and it's been Cargill Incorporated, who serves this area, who we buy from, has been extended, basically received an extension of their contract by the state. That cost per ton is $73.89 per ton. We are required to purchase 60% of our identified tonnage, and we can purchase up to 140% of the contract amount that we had, say we're going to buy. So, I just need the board's acknowledgement that we are going to participate in purchasing from Co-Stars for road salt for 2023, 2024.
In the form of a motion, is that what you want, or just?
We typically do just, or just an acknowledgement and then, you know, execute, we just some...
So, acknowledged.
Okay. That works for me. Thank you. Along the lines of winter maintenance, our 2023-24 rental of snow removal equipment with Operator. We publicly advertise this, and we typically contract with multiple companies to provide additional support for our winter maintenance. We were fortunate that last year, we did not have to engage any of our additional contractors because of the mild winter. However, we're always prepared. So, we put the bid out. The bid opening was on November 14th. Our contractors responded with bids. They are, I'm going to read the name of the company, how many vehicles it's providing, and the rates at which they're going to provide those, and in a, in an hourly rate. And then, I'm going to ask the board to accept all of these and award to each separately. Okay? So, it's TS Hess &amp; Sons Excavating. They're going to provide one vehicle at $130 an hour. B&amp;E Carts LLC is going to provide three vehicles at $155 an hour. Effluent Retrieval Incorporated is going to supply five vehicles at $170 an hour. And James &amp; Family Enterprises LLC is going to provide two vehicles at $285 per hour. Again, I'm asking the board to accept all this pricing, and then we will use them as, on an as-needed basis throughout the winter maintenance for 2023, 2024.
Why can't they all be the same price?
They, because the way we advertise it and bid it, they, they're basically submitting a bid. They're submitting a bid.
I assume you start with the cheaper, do you not, when you call people out?
Yes, that would be our intent.
Dave, are the vehicles also of different sizes to be able to provide different services?
Yes. They've also provided scheduled vehicles that they're going to provide as well.
That was my question, is do they guarantee we'll have access to these vehicles if needed?
Yes, that is also part of the contract. That it's not like, well, you know, maybe. This is, they're, they're going to be on call, and that's Mr. Gar, our road superintendent, handles all that. And if we have an event, he calls and gets them, gets them ready and gets them on, on call.
I wonder, Dave. I'll, I'll make the motion, but just a question regarding salt, snow removal. I mean, everything you hear is like, that this summer, this winter is going to be a banger of a winter. So, just making sure that we're, I mean, obviously, we're getting prepared. But, yeah. So, I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Okay. Motion is to approve these four entities for our snow removal contractors. There's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay. Next, let me just know is we're working on renovations to the Public Works Building, and we basically solicited proposals for the replacement of an existing garage door. While the entire space is not renovated, we're working, and we're trying to at least dry it in for the winter. We do have vehicles in there, and we're doing some more remediation and planning. Right now, we'd like to purchase a garage door, so we solicited a proposal to receive two. I'm asking for the board to approve us to purchase a garage door from McBride's Overhead Garage Doors in the amount of $19,500. That includes removal of the existing one and installation of the new one.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Okay, thank you. Every, all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Thank you.
And last but not least on my list is, we have equipment to go to auction. We use Minnesota Bid. On my memo, I listed a number of items, including soccer goals, traffic signal equipment that has been removed and taken out of service, some signage, and also some office equipment, a plotter. So, I'm asking for the board's approval to list these items on auction, to auction.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second. Sure we can't use that goal soccer thing somewhere?
We're getting out of the soccer goal business. Yeah.
All right. There's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right. Who's speaking to this? Road traffic calming. Is that you, Dave?
Well, we're not.
Oh, sorry.
Manager and supervisors.
I totally, I, yeah, totally put my agenda aside and went right to my pile. Sorry about that. Okay. Who's up?
Stephanie.
I have nothing at this time.
Turn the page. Stop it.
It's on the brain.
All right. So, nothing from you, Stephanie. Supervisors, how about it? Nancy, you want to go?
Sure. Just wanted to thank the Veterans Committee, specifically Chris, Stephanie for our lovely ceremony. Also, want to thank Representative Brennan and Congressman Fitzpatrick. It was very moving. Appreciated the bell ringing. And thank you also for bringing the Reeds Across America to Doylestown Cemetery. I believe you said there's 1,000 veterans in Doylestown, so appreciate that. That's it.
Well, we had a couple really wonderful events. Last week, the Girl Scout Troop 2372, a team of 15 third-grade kids came to the township to earn one of their badges. There are treated presentations by our own Stephanie Mason, who was a wonderful example of what women can do in municipal government. They also heard from State Rep. Tim Brennan. He was very busy that day. He came here twice. School Board Director-elect Susan Gibson and myself. They're able to learn about municipal government, state government, the judiciary, and what we do for our communities. But, the real showstopper, and I think he left already, was the incredible office tour by Sergeant Stitch. These kids, I wish you could have all seen them. They lost their minds when they went over to the police side. They were able to tour through and see where the offices were, which were fun. But, they got to see the, the holding rooms and all of that, all of those spaces, and then went outside and got to check out the vehicles. And these girls really, they, they had a time, the time of their lives. And Sergeant Stitch made it incredibly memorable for them, so I thank him very much. Please let him know. And of course, the Veterans Day event was, was that day as well. It was earlier in the morning, and there was singing and presentations and a whole bunch of events, including the bell ringing that Supervisor Santa Cecilia was talking about honoring all who served. And it included speeches from Representative Fitzpatrick and State Rep. Tim Brennan again. The ceremony was lovely, and I just want to thank everybody who put it together and everybody involved. And I also want to particularly thank Stephanie and Sergeant Stitch for being there for these kids. The Girl Scout Troop, this was a late day for them, and it was actually their day off as well. It was Stephanie's day off as well. So, I, I really appreciate them going the extra mile.
I think we'd be remiss not to mention Living Hope Church. You sang. Thank you for bringing them up.
Oh, they, it was lovely.
Yeah. Dan?
Yeah. Updates on my two very active committees. Bike and Hike met this morning. As far as things we're working on, we are continuing to work on the New Britain Road Extension to our rail, our trail system. Sorry, I almost said rails and trails, different group. And then, also, the Shady Retreat System is going out to bid and in the process, so hopefully we'll see some action on that. Might begin a little late for the winter, but in the spring. I, I also spoke with the committee about trail maintenance, knowing we were talking about that tonight. And they raised some of the similar concerns about what we can do to identify problem areas, like Mr. Torpe talked about with the, with the drainage. And one thing to keep in mind with some of our trails is, we have a system that's over 30 years old. At this point, the first one's being put in at Coots Elementary, and we've learned a lot about trail design and what works with trees and what works with drainage over the years. So, there's, there's room for improvement on some of our older trails and identifying those places where we can mitigate cracking from roots or just cracking and, and drainage. So, the committee is excited to work with Mr. Tomko and help to identify that. And some discussions about how we can solicit community feedback in that, from, you know, our member, our residents that jog and bike those trails all the time. The other big active committee I have right now is our Water and Sewer Committee, and with relation to the Act 537 Plan that was submitted to this board and is going through the public comment process right now. And I know many of our residents have had a good deal of questions about what the 537 entails for them and the future of their properties. And we have been recording all of that. The period has been, I don't want to say officially extended, but if you submit comment, they still get added to the, the public document that will go to the Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection, which is the next step. So, if you have additional feedback, we'd like to hear it. And, you know, one of the big things I just want to emphasize with the 537 Plan, from the questions that came up, a few things is that this is, it's a plan. It's, it's a roadmap for the township. It's one of these things we're required by state law to have. And also, we want to have it to be able to discuss with residents. We're not planning on putting sewers in your neighborhood tomorrow, but we want to be having these discussions about what it looks like five years, 10 years from now, so we can start engaging citizens on that. And people can start making plans for their needs and giving us feedback on what, what they're looking for, what their systems are like. So, it's the initial step to the, all this discussion that's going to happen. As far as any sewer projects in the future go, those will be additional conversations and ordinances that will be discussed with, with the neighborhoods involved and, and this board and our community. And it is a long process, as some of our residents know. So, thank you again for all the feedback we receive. We're reviewing it. And again, just, we're not putting sewers in tomorrow. It's going to take some time.
That's helpful. Jen?
Just, I met and had my last meeting with Park and Rec, and lots of great things that are coming up in December. Really neat activities. I mean, it's Decemberfest. So, there's a bunch of awesome activities. Get on the website, you can see it. But, I just want to express my gratitude publicly to Park and Rec for, you know, 12 years on this board. It was my first time serving as liaison to Park and Rec. I've been liaison to Kids' Castle, I think, the entire 12 years. So, I kind of was like this auxiliary player to the larger Park and Rec. And this is the most, well, I don't want to say the most committed, because we have incredible committees, but this committee is incredibly dedicated. I think, you know, in the past year, this was probably their most challenging year, where they were tasked with really giving insight and opinion and research on the best things for our Park and Rec system. And they handled it with grace, with, you know, factual information. They came to every board meeting. They showed up. And so, I just, I'm going to miss all of you guys as a liaison. Like I told them, I'm still going to be an active part. But, Blythe stepped up. This was her first year as chair, and, and again, not an easy year to step up as, as chair of this particular committee, and she did such a fantastic job. So, please, you know, one of the last discussions that, one of the discussions we had at our last board meeting are, was that there is so much opportunity, especially with the new community center coming, for all of the incredible things that we're going to be able to do. And the Park and Rec Committee was already talking about the opportunities and what's to come. And so, you know, again, I'm just going to miss you all. You guys are, you guys have been great, so I thank you.
And as Ryan mentioned, Santa in the Park is Saturday, December 9th. What time, Blythe, does that start?
1:00 to 4:00. The City Pavilion. So, please, everyone is welcome. And bring, and bring your kids, you know?
Yeah, definitely bring your kids.
Please bring the kids.
Add that to the, to the announcements. Okay, that's all I have. All right. Next item is the unfinished business with Turk Road. Doylestown Township Police Department studies. Anybody who's going to take this one? Dave?
Yes, I am. All right. So, as a follow-up to the, the October Board of Supervisors meeting, basically, we had the Doylestown Township Police Department conduct two additional studies. One specifically was the multiway stop control at all the intersections along Turk Road. The other one was looking at the Act 31 of 2018 Commercial Motor Vehicle restrictions as well. Basically, those studies were conducted by the police department drafted by Sergeant Jones. They were, they collected all the data, did all the analysis, and that information was provided to Matt Johnson at Panone, our Township Traffic Engineer, and he reviewed those studies and commented on them. And then, they were basically finalized. Additionally, an item that was conducted was that Panone conducted an additional Turk Road supplemental truck restriction study, which basically looked at turning movements of sizes of vehicles. What we're hearing is, one of the items is the size of trucks that are traveling up and down Turk Road. So, in addition to the Act 31 study, Mr. Johnson looked at size of vehicles, did a study, and said, basically, vehicles turning off of Bristol Road onto Turk Road. said, basically, vehicles turning off of Bristol Road onto Turk Road, kind of heading, for lack of a better description, northbound and exiting off Turk and turning onto Bristol. What he determined was, and as well as he looked at the intersection at Alms House, what he determined was that vehicles over thirty feet in length have to, the way the geometry of the road is, is very narrow, narrow lanes, there's no turning lanes, there's tight radii, that basically, it's his recommendation, well, I'll go back to the, I should go back to the police report, police, Sergeant Jones was result basically, and I can read what it says, based on the results of my study, the elements outlined in Act 31 of 2020 to include lane wisps and other hazards such as community parks, as well as my review of the memo prepared by Doylestown Township Traffic Engineer regarding turning radii limitations, I recommend that Turk Road be properly posted to restrict commercial motor vehicles over thirty feet in length. So that's a combination of Sergeant Jones's recommendations, as well as Matt Johnson's recommendations from Panone regarding truck restrictions. Okay? So we looked at those, and then, again, all the stop warrant analyses were conducted, and none of the intersections met the stop warrant, a multiway stop warrant analysis. Okay? Currently, all the side streets obviously have stop signs. With that information, then, we actually held a local traffic advisory committee meeting on November thirteenth at 7:00 PM, a public meeting. At that time, those studies were reviewed and discussed by the committee. Based on those two, those two items, the committee accepted the recommendations that Sergeant Jones had made, the police department's recommendations, that we do not warrant multiway stops on, along Turk Road, as well as accepted the recommendation that we restrict trucks in thirty feet in length, greater than thirty feet in length, and post the road properly as indicated by the Township Traffic Engineer. That's where we're at right now. Basically, where we're at is that we are waiting for, while we received a review and comments back from the Township Manager and the Warrington Township Manager and the Warrington Township Traffic Engineer, that they support and agree with those conclusions, we're still waiting for basically endorsement by the Warrington Township Police Department. So regarding those two items, but that's where we stand right now on those two items. And finally, so there's one more item which we were also asked to look at, which was the traffic calming policy that the board adopted in 2018. And basically, Mr. Johnson prepared a table comparison of all the policies of municipalities in Bucks County, some Bucks County municipalities, as well as in Montgomery. And what we determined was that the seventy percent approval process to go to the next step and do a traffic calming study, that seventy percent, we're on the high side. And so we had a discussion, and it's a traffic, the local traffic advisory committee's recommendation to this board, that we revise that policy, reduce that to fifty percent. So there's a draft policy that was in your packet with the revisions. I'm asking the recommendation, as chair of the LTAC, that, on behalf of the LTAC, that we're recommending that the policy be revised accordingly and be noted, and noted it's been revised, and if it's accepted tonight with tonight's date, and that'll be our new policy moving forward for traffic calming.
Everyone have a chance to review the revised policy?
Yes, I'd like to make the motion to approve the revised policy.
I'll second.
Questions?
I have a few questions about some of the stuff presented, but not about the traffic calming policy.
Okay. I'll call the, call the question on the traffic calming policy first in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Go ahead.
I don't know if you have a good example of this, Dave, but for a thirty-foot truck restriction, what does that kind of look like for your average truck? Are we talking like up to moving truck, like the delivery trucks kind of thing?
I think the best, best way to describe would be like a single, single unit delivery truck, so a cab, trailer combination, you know, delivery type vehicle.
Okay.
And I should caveat with that is that, except for local deliveries, would be that restriction. So a truck, a tractor trailer coming in to help somebody move would be able to move down Turk Road and go into either side, Warrington's side or our side, to basically, you know, whatever it might be, whatever, making a delivery, a furniture delivery, that kind of thing. So, but a single unit would be, would be, it's like a single unit type cab, trailer combination, or it could be a flatbed, someone's, you know, delivery of, of goods and services.
Okay. So kind of like the, like the giant direct trucks, almost?
Yes, correct.
Okay. My other question, four-way stop and the traffic policy, just to make sure I understand, if we get to a point where a traffic calming policy is conducted, it's likely a, the four-way stops would not be recommended as a traffic calming tool, that they're being, we were looking at how to use them as an enforcement tool, not a, they're not meant to be a traffic calming. Understand, right?
No, not necessarily.
And then I just want to make sure I'm clear on the other pieces with what you recommend for Turk Road with the, the truck sign, we have nothing to do up here, we're just waiting for feedback from Warrington on it?
At this point, yeah, we want, we want the, you know, we want Warrington's police department's endorsement of that. Same thing as well as with, you know, with the chief's department's endorsement, because they're going to have to enforce it. So we want that before we move forward. And then once we move forward, with the way where things go right now, is that we'd have a, we'd convene a traffic commission meeting, and then the traffic would then act on, or make a recommendation and act on documenting that, and then it would become record.
Okay.
Anything?
And then we would, we would purchase the signs, we probably have to work with PennDOT to determine posting of, of the proper signage on, on Bristol Road as well, in both sides and on Alms House as well.
Thanks, Dave. So we'll wait to hear back from Warrington.
Correct.
Chief, you'll put your two cents in.
Mr. Tomko's been emailing the Township Manager, trying to get the endorsement through them.
Okay. All right, I guess we'll see it again then.
Yep.
So, I just wanted some clarification as far as the legality and the enforceability of things like lowering the speed limit to twenty-five in, especially in front of the park and approaching the park. Is, is that where there's a problem? Is that why we can't just mark it as twenty-five miles an hour? And is that the issue of legality and enforceability?
Chief can talk about enforceability, but PennDOT has requirements imposed on municipal entities as to what speed limits you're allowed to impose by ordinance. And unfortunately, you may feel the need to reduce the speed limit, but if you don't follow the PennDOT, it's not like guidance, it's direction, you can't enforce it if someone raises the issue of whether you had the appropriate studies and all the other requirements. Chief, you want to elaborate?
Yeah, the, the PennDOT, the Title 75, the vehicle code, allows us to post certain township-owned roads at twenty-five miles an hour. Where you, where you get into difficulty is when you're trying to follow the Publication 212, I believe I got it right, Publication 212, which stipulates how those speed limits are set. Basically, there's a formula in there that is called the eighty-fifth percentile, which is considered the safe running distance or speed limits for the roadways. That's where we're having a problem with this roadway. It's a local roadway, the eighty-fifth percentile doesn't state that. So we're going to have a problem with enforcement as far as you're never going to get, and we've had it on other roads in the township, and I explained this last month, is we can, we can post it, but we're never going to get compliance. It's been demonstrated time and time again throughout the township.
Right, so, so, for example, Spring Valley Road was reduced to twenty-five.
Correct.
So, and I live close to there. So it used to be thirty-five, and people would routinely go forty-five. And occasionally, you'll have somebody that'll just shoot down that straightaway, it's a nice straight road. But now that it's reduced to twenty-five, most people probably go closer to thirty-five. So we are seeing, at least in my personal experience, of course, your professional experience might show different.
But that, that's where you go back to the whole argument of, or whole discussion, I should say, about traffic calming.
Yeah.
The lowering of the speed limit didn't work, there's a next step, it's called traffic calming, where it requires studies and roadway modifications to get it to where you want it to be. That's the issue, and that's the reason why we're modifying the traffic calming policy tonight, to try to get it to where we're getting enforcement, we're getting education, training, enforcement, and then modification to the roadways. That's the process.
Okay. So are you saying that if we were to lower it twenty-five right now, that there, if someone got a ticket for going thirty-five, they could, they could fight that?
They can, they can fight it, absolutely. Anybody can fight any ticket they want.
More successful.
The problem with lowering it to twenty-five, I know, I'm pretty confident that Warrington will not support a lowering of twenty-five miles per hour in both directions, therefore you would have twenty-five miles per hour on one side of the road and thirty-five miles per hour on the other side. Which is not ideal.
Right.
That's why we're trying to get the endorsement from the Warrington Township Police Department, that they are agreement for the, for the vehicle length enforcement. Because again, we don't want to have to, you know, to have vehicles stopped on one side of the road, but not the other side of the road, because we're not legally have enforcement powers on Warrington Township without their approval, and they're not going to give us the approval to enforce it if they don't agree with it.
Right. And the same is, the same holds true for the size of trucks that are allowed on there?
Goes.
Same thing?
Regardless of the violation.
Okay. Thank you. Are we done with this bit of business?
I have one more question about that. So I think when we were talking about the speed limit, in Doylestown, you can go, I think it's eleven miles over before you're pulled over, and then Warrington?
Greater than ten.
And it's ten, and then in Warrington it's nine?
It's the same.
It's the same? Okay.
It's a state law.
Technically, they could be going forty-five miles an hour.
If you could talk your legislation and get the local law enforcement to have the ability to use radar, then it would be five miles an hour, but we're not allowed to do it.
Right. So I'm, I mean, I'm just, like I said, my whole thing has always been the safety, it's just that park being there and kids crossing, and the fact that when you see the pictures and you see there's no shoulders, and you, and listen, I grew up on a road exactly like that, so I know, like, your mailbox is right there, and progress happens, and that becomes the.
Right. As we move forward, and like I said, I've, I've got several years on this police department, and then not many more to go. If you decide to build additional parks down the road, be considered about what speed limits are around there, because this is the problem you have when you start getting growth, and you need to plan ahead. It was thirty-five miles an hour along Alms House Road, Turk Road, and when those parks were built, we should have probably thought about certain things back then with the crosswalks. Now we're, we're getting there, but are we there yet?
Like, because, like I said, we contribute to that traffic with the park.
Correct. Anytime you develop, you got bike and hike paths, you start developing, you're encouraging pedestrians and bicycles to have conflicts with motor vehicles.
Right. And, not to be graphic, but getting hit by forty-five mile an hour car versus, well, thirty-five mile an hour, I think there's a better chance of someone who, a pedestrian, is that correct?
I would agree with that.
Okay, well then, if you use that methodology and said everyone goes ten miles over, are we, is that the safer thing, you know? I mean, I'm just, I'm just going purely by safety.
I don't, at this point, I don't know what your question is.
Yes, my question is, if we were, if we did ask Warrington if they would agree to the twenty-five mile an hour, which they may or may not, I don't know what, I don't know their police, and people did end up going thirty-five miles an hour, it could prevent.
You, you can, the Doylestown Township side of the roadway, I am ninety-nine percent sure qualifies as a local roadway. Two things, two things have to occur. Number one, it has to be a township-owned roadway. Number two, the spacing of the houses from one dwelling to the next dwelling must be within so many feet, okay? For it to be qualified as a local roadway to meet the twenty-five mile per hour speed limit zone. So let me just explain that a little bit deeper. If I have one house, and then a quarter mile down the road I have another house, it would not qualify. The houses have to be close enough together to constitute almost a neighborhood.
Got it.
The Warrington Township side of it is not, I don't believe it would meet that standard.
Yep, I've seen it, I know, it's.
So there's, again, lies the problem.
Okay, I think we beat this dead horse. Let's move on to the hearing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ready?
Thanks, Dave.
Thank you.
If I may, in September, the board heard a presentation from an applicant requesting that the board consider amending the zoning ordinance to provide for additional, an additional use within the limited industrial district. And the board authorized the preparation advertisement of that ordinance. To that end, I sent a copy to the Doylestown Township Planning Commission for comments, I sent a copy to the Bucks County Planning Commission for comments. The notice of the hearing was duly advertised in the Intelligencer on Tuesday, October thirty-one of 2023, and again on November seven of 2023, and a copy of the ordinance was posted with the Bucks County Law Library. So it's now appropriate time for you to conduct a public hearing on the ordinance, and I believe the applicant's counsel is here to present and discuss the proposed ordinance.
Board members, thank you very much. Kelly McGowan, representing Arcadia Development and Penrose, who are the proponents and who are here requesting that you consider what is a senior affordable residential proposal for Doylestown Township, with a focus, and we'll get into this a little bit, on the veteran community, a community who we've already heard this board refer to multiple times during this meeting, as an important community within Doylestown Township. We are here after, or as a result of what has been three years of discussions, that started with a luxury apartment proposal. Two hundred and twenty units, as we're used to seeing in Doylestown Township, in Doylestown Borough, and in the surrounding neighborhoods. We have had discussions with Doylestown Township Planning Commission and staff, Doylestown Borough Planning Commission and staff relating to that proposal. We ended up going through three different proposals throughout the past three years in response to continued reactions to residential development proposals and comments that include, it's too dense, it's too much impact, and it's not satisfying community needs. We already have enough luxury housing. You'll see in our next slide, Doylestown Township's median house price right now is seven hundred and thirty thousand dollars. So, in response, we continued to work through a process, we held at least fifteen meetings, including joint meetings, Township and Borough staff. At the end of that process, those meetings led to two conclusions. Number one, there was an interest in affordable housing. And number two, this particular property, the property that we're looking at on the Broad Street corridor, and I'm not going back, we've presented to, to the board before, we are looking at the L.A. zoning district, which is in Doylestown Township, which borders both, a couple of L.A. districts, but both Doylestown Borough and the township area in the area of North Broad Street. In that area, we were led to a conclusion that the borough was not looking to change their industrial zoning on that side of Broad Street. So the focus was on affordable proposal residential in Doylestown Township. So we started asking questions, we started looking at this proposal. As I said, the median house price in Doylestown is currently seven hundred and thirty thousand dollars. As we were preparing, as we were looking at this, CNN, November two thousand and twenty-three, this month, CNN tells us, the last time America's housing market was this unaffordable, Ronald Reagan was in the White House. The Intercontinental Exchange, which operates futures exchanges and clearing houses, reported and cited an increase in the percentage of monthly income required for housing costs to bring it to the least affordable level in thirty-nine years. Inflation, high borrowing costs, and a tight real estate market, lack of inventory, all lead to this. Back at that time, in order to afford the average home, the cost was about three point five times median income. Now, the ratio is approximately six times in order to afford a home. So in response, we started looking locally, and what that means in Doylestown Township. Senior housing needs, because we're focused on senior housing, within five miles of Doylestown, over fifty-five households, and we'll get to, to ages, just over sixteen thousand. Over twenty percent, one-fifth of those, of those households have an income of under fifty thousand. have an income of under $50,000 annually senior affordable housing opportunities in that same geographic area there are 152 units the wait time at the the closest location at Grundy Hall in Doylestown Township we're told is between two and a half and three years Penrose who is working on this project has identified an additional need which is a veteran housing need in Bucks County there's a veteran population and identified veteran population of just under 31,000 individuals in Bucks County over the age of 65 that is over half 18,000 veterans in Bucks County in Ben Salem Penrose opened recently an affordable senior housing product focused on veterans similar to what would be facilitated by this ordinance at least in 21 days and has housed over 50% of the population of veterans there is an identified and identifiable need for affordable housing in central Bucks County so what this proposed ordinance does is to provide a use in the LI zoning district the LI zoning district and the particular location of this property and this zoning district happens to be in a location in Doylestown Township that is incredibly suitable walkable to amenities that will specifically and can specifically serve a senior population and any population we've talked about walk scores we prevent presented it to this board before the walk score for this property the walk score for this portion of the LI district is an 82 out of 100 within that area we have the senior center we have retail we have amenities that are all within walking distance there's no impact on the underlying LI zoning district this isn't an overlay this isn't anything other than a new use an optional use to add to what is currently provided for your limited industrial district it's subject to strict criteria I mentioned age earlier 62 plus the ordinance was crafted in compliance with HUD regulations and in order to meet regulations for tax credit applicants in order to provide real affordable housing at least 20% of units and less than 60% of the area median income the area meeting median income in Doylestown Township is 17,460 or excuse me 47,460 dollars so what does that mean here's your walk score this is where we are groceries the Legion Post 210 the park at Broad Commons entertainment shopping and the senior center we also heard in our conversations over the past three years minimizing impact so this is LI LI uses would be permitted this particular property while this LI district is somewhat developed for mixed uses I'll point out there are residential uses there are industrial uses it's really a mix of of uses within this this length of LI we heard minimum impact seniors we all know senior populations have less fiscal impact they have less impact on our school districts and they have less impact on traffic and less impact on our roads so what we're proposing is not a land development approval this is a zoning ordinance amendment it's a zoning ordinance amendment to meet a community need if this board does move forward and enact the ordinance amendment to add this use any development proposal including the one that we've previously presented would go through the township's normal process of land development and be subject to your subdivision ordinance your stormwater ordinance and all of the other ordinances of this township that will apply to all of those developments as Jeff mentioned at the beginning the ordinance has gone through the municipality's planning code process that included a Bucks County Planning Commission review they issued a letter November 1 I will note a couple of things about the letter the first of which is they note the comprehensive plan every time a municipality enacts a new ordinance you take a look at your comprehensive plan and you check those community objectives back to 1989 the Doylestown Township comprehensive plan identified two things an aging population and an affordability need to date Doylestown Township has not addressed the affordability need we see that in the numbers we see that in the ordinance they also note the township's three LI districts are either adjacent or within close proximity to municipal boundaries again that takes us back to the impact question so we look at that there was comment made with respect to this particular property and a couple other properties the Harvey Avenue Treatment Plant is in proximity to this property so why would we identify this property so we took a look the other development that's close to the Harvey Avenue Treatment Plant is Westwick property a development that we're all familiar with townhouse development you go back you look at recent sales in the Westwick Development Townhouse Community between 411 and almost $500,000 are sale prices of those units the remaining comments of Bucks County Planning Commission are technical we've been through those technical comments I've been through them with your solicitor there is nothing substantive that would cause a substantive revision or otherwise cause a or look to make a change to this ordinance that would differ in a material respect to what has already been advertised to what is being considered most of these technical comments what was pointed out are consistency comments things that you see in ordinance make it consistent make it work within the body of your zoning ordinance it was pointed out that for example a parking stall size and we see this sometimes right is provided in the zoning ordinance at a smaller dimension that it is in your subdivision and land development ordinance well that is a land development issue and that will need to be taken up in land development the remaining comments as I said Bucks County Planning Commission made note of senior housing requirements again this was crafted pursuant to HUD regulations and that's as far as they went so we would ask any questions of the board questions of your solicitor we've worked with your township planner as well prior to considering the ordinance.
Okay questions on the board on the board.
I I don't have any specific questions I've reviewed reviewed this ad nauseam specifically the Bucks County Planning Commission memo I mean I think that this is an important step that we should be taking as a township you know dating back to the comprehensive plan and aging community and you know the the median home price you know when you see those numbers and you know we sit up here we talk about it's Veterans Month we need to support our veterans we see the number of veterans within this this county what I love about this and again I know we're just talking about usage today but when I what I love about this from the down the line from the planning perspective is we have seen this in Bristol it's been successful the need was there so I'm sure there's questions but I I will put a motion on the table to approve this pending just making sure the require the technical requirements but from Bucks County Planning Commission are answered or you know satisfied.
I think Kelly's prepared if we get to that point to identify those comments within the Bucks County Planning Commission report that would be appropriate for adjustments.
Okay there's a motion?
No she hasn't made a motion yet.
I did.
Oh you did?
I I had a question um we talk about veterans but in the ordinance does it list veterans?
It does not.
Okay and that's why that's why I'm going to go back to that because
Right.
if we're really committed to it can we put.
I don't think you can put that you have to you have you can market to veterans but it has to be you can't.
You can't target in the zoning ordinance the same way we can't target to Doylestown Township residents for example although it's you know to satisfy a community need what there's a track record of doing is is marketing and Penrose has found that in doing that they as I said achieved a over 50% population rate at the lower Bucks location that that recently opened so it is it is a focus it is it is important but it can't go into the zoning.
I understand I just wanted to and then in terms of the density and the purse it's only 20% affordable housing so can we control or how does that I mean if we're serious about it we're serious about it.
Yes so there are thresholds so
Right.
part of what was accomplished in the ordinance is that it's not a it's not in a box it's not set so it's a sliding scale
Right.
there are thresholds there is a density bonus for the higher you get in terms of percentage of affordability and and that is and that is by design.
And these are units that you've seen or used other places I assume right okay.
Correct yeah we vetted this ordinance through other model ordinances.
Did you use what other models did you use out of curiosity anybody?
Oh I couldn't tell you off the top of my head but I yeah
I was just curious.
happy to share it with you we've also shared it with other affordable housing providers and other developers to make sure that it is not only viable but it again fits within those accepted practices.
So I I just have a couple things to say before we move forward on the on the on the motion so I am incredibly sensitive to the fact that we need workforce housing that we need affordable senior housing I believe that this type of project is desperately needed in the township I do have a couple concerns with with changing the ordinance for LI districts as a whole and I think you heard some of these similar concerns when we were at the at the planning commission we have other LI districts in the township and to change the ordinance to allow this type of you know development to be done on this LI zone would allow for the same types of building on other LI zones and I don't know as if I don't know as if that would be inappropriate would be appropriate in all of them so just doing a blanket change in the zoning ordinance I think might be a little a little much without having the planning commission really take a deeper dive in it so I mean I I personally and also I value our relationship with Doylestown Borough and I believe that they need to have we make sure that we we have their input as well because the the traffic will be going down into more borough areas so I want to make sure that we have at least some some discussion with them as well but I mean I would actually like to make a motion to.
Is a motion on the table.
Okay well I was going to suggest to table the motion until the planning commission.
I would just say Jen also remember you know the the Grasso Building we did approve that was an LI district that we approved with I think their senior housing there so we've it was.
Yeah it was.
Yeah so I mean this isn't we're not necessarily setting a precedent here I mean the way I look at it is you know regardless of the ordinance changes like everything has to be looked at by on a case by case basis you know I mean that's going to be for everything that we do.
So with the Grasso project the change in the LI was it a change in the ordinance in order to to accommodate?
No it was a stipulated agreement but it is kind of opens that door of the LI zoning with senior housing was finally what was settled on and what they have preliminary plan approval at this time for.
We're adding a use simply adding.
This is different because it's affordable.
Because and and I think important too you know just to make a point like this is usage not planning right like there's so many other steps to any project right like we're not saying let's go you know it it's just changing the usage so they can then present us move forward to the next step with actually showing us more of what this looks like you know.
Right but to modify the zoning the actual zoning ordinance there were some consistency matters that were brought up and although they might be minor I understand the planning commission might be interested in making sure that they're consistent like for example I think buffering the buffer was was a concern because that's a little bit different with LI than it is in 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 one of these types of what we're looking to build here so I think that for me I think it would be important for the planning commission to actually just work this out.
They have had it right it's been.
They've seen it yeah they've seen it but I believe that they had further
I thought.
Concerns.
Yeah but I thought they actually put it to us to make a decision.
I believe they I believe Stephanie I don't know if you have that but I believe they were looking to have a little bit more time with it.
They Jen is correct they they want affordability they want it in the ordinance they like the concept but they do feel that the ordinance itself needs modification.
Okay.
As a and I summarize that.
Thank you. Do you do you know what those modifications are Ms. McGowan?
So the discussion and I'm basing this upon the draft planning commission minutes specifically there was a comment with respect to the buffering adjoining LI and other non residential uses as as Jen noted there was a comment with respect to the density as as Nancy noted and then there was a specific comment with respect to allowing the alleys and streets to abut property lines again they go to some of the more specific aspects of the use what I'll say Jen in response is there's a reason why it's so difficult to do these affordable housing projects they're never in the right place.
Yeah exactly.
They're never they shouldn't be in R1 no that's you know they're too dense they shouldn't be in LI we have compatibility issues they can't be in the C commercial district because that's where we have our commercial that's what we keep hearing and if there's going to be a legitimate discussion you know we are presenting what we believe to be while it's owned LI a highly suitable location for this type of density this type of use and to take a step in order to bring that type of affordable project that type of affordable product into Doylestown Township so that's how we have been working through and it's been three years like we understand we have sat down with the borough eight times 10 times I understand I I really do and as a permitted use from the use perspective we respect that borough CI zoning and and pulled out of that we believe this is an important project and an important project for Doylestown Township so you know that's that's why we're having this conversation.
I I think I mean I I don't think anybody on here would disagree that that this these are all very important elements to to what we want to see in the future of our township and I also believe from being lays on 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 the planning commission I believe that they are fully in support of affordable housing in the township I mean it's just a plain fact that we we need housing that people can actually pay for in the township I mean it's senior housing but also like I said workforce housing I just I think that they needed a little bit more time with it to make sure that they ironed it out so I don't I don't disagree that we that the project is something that I agree that the project is something that we're looking for we are looking for something that's affordable we are definitely supportive of our veterans so that is is a beautiful part of this but all I'm all I'm saying is to that we were I'm looking to table it for now just to let the planning commission iron out all those details.
It sounds to me like those those are de minimis there are things that can be ironed out I don't know that this is going that this affects our decision on whether to add this use to this to this district I understand that there are land development issues I understand our neighbors in Doylestown Borough have concerns but all of those concerns will go through the land development process if we are committed to affordable housing in Doylestown Township and this is a likely area to have that happen then I think that's what we should be doing it the grand the grand scheme is having yeah we all want to have it but where this is a great place to have it and and I the boroughs here I know their concerns I respect their concerns that's always what happens when you got a municipal line development and you listen to us we listen to you but I think all this stuff is really land development concern not necessarily are we going to allow this use in this district at this location and I think it's appropriate.
But it's not at this location it's at all LIs the other two as well correct?
I guess once you add it to the to the use I add the use to the district then it's at all other locations that we have LI but the likelihood is are you going to have. But the likelihood is, are you going to have a development for low income at all those other locations? Probably not. There's a lot of uses in LI that don't get developed because there's nobody wanting, wanting them in any particular location. But this is a location for this kind of use that makes sense. I don't care what the other LI, if they, I don't, I don't think that matters to me right now. Can you, you have to take the podium and identify yourself.
Jen, I agree.
Are you Mr. Griffin?
I am.
Yeah.
It's a month.
Welcome.
Hello, so I'm Andrew Griffin, I'm here on behalf of Doylestown Borough. I just wanted to make sure that we had an opportunity to put in our input before you vote.
We read your letter.
Okay. You know, essentially, we're here this evening asking you to table your consideration of the ordinance in order to allow the Borough the opportunity, along with its staff and experts, to coordinate with the township and look into whether this is the most feasible location for this type of development, not just the specific LI district, but also this site in general. We share many of the concerns that were laid out by the Bucks County Planning Commission, as well as your own Planning Commission, and it's not as simple as just minor adjustments. There are a lot of substantive issues with the ordinance that would require the Planning Commission to re-review the ordinance and for it to be re-advertised. One of the biggest issues, too, is that it's not just changing the LI district by adding a use, it's also substantively changing the dimensional standards within the LI district. So if you look at comparable uses, for example, mixed residential uses, which are allowed under Section 175-45 in the R2 District, has various setbacks and parking requirements that are set forth. For example, the front yard requirement in that district, again, for, for mixed residential uses is 100 feet, this ordinance has it at 10 feet. For side yard setback, it's 75 feet in that ordinance, this ordinance proposes 10 feet. Rear yards, again, mixed residential, it's 75 feet, this ordinance proposes it 25 feet. This ordinance also has no requirement whatsoever as to buffer yards, but when you look at adjoining properties and the zoning regulations that are applicable to them, there's typically a 30-foot buffer requirement. In addition, this ordinance sets forth a proposed height maximum limitation of 50 feet, but when you look at what is otherwise permitted under the zoning ordinance, the maximum height is 35 feet. Again, woodlands disturbance, you look through the ordinance, typically, the requirement is that at least 50% of woodlands must be left undisturbed. This ordinance provides that only 20% has to be undisturbed. Parking, this ordinance provides for a one-bedroom that you only need .75 spaces, one parking space for a two-bedroom. When you look at the zoning ordinance, for any other use under the zoning ordinance, you need two spaces per dwelling. Driveways, alleys, and private streets. When you look at the proposed ordinance, it's, it's allowing these driveways and alleyways to be provided within setbacks. Any other use under the ordinance, you would have to abide by those setbacks. Density, you look at the ordinance and you see what is the maximum number of units provided per acre, typically, it's eight units. Under this ordinance, it allows up to 30 per acre, depending on the percentage that is low-income housing. In previous, the proposed ordinance says up to 60%, but when you look under the ordinance, the maximum that you see otherwise is 50%. So really, you know, the concern is that you're applying an ordinance to the entirety of the light industrial district while changing all of the dimensional standards to accommodate just this specific property, this 280 North Broad Street. You have catered an ordinance to allow them not to appear before your zoning hearing board, not to have the expertise of the zoning hearing board to look into, is there a hardship that exists that warrants a variance for not just the use, but also for these dimensional standards? There is a significant market component to this, there are 13, I believe, market rate properties that are included, and they will have the benefit of all of these deferential dimensional requirements, even if the actual low-income housing percentage is, is small. So that's one of the concerns of the Borough, we share that with the Planning Commission, we share that with your own Planning Commission, and we ask that you, you table this, have them re-review the ordinance, have it go back through the process so that it can be looked at in, in its totality for those changes. And then I'd also ask that if you would just allow John Davis to have a look.
Kelly, do you want to respond now?
Can I just ask a question? Is the Borough in favor of affordable senior housing marketed to veterans?
So, any of these questions, I'll, I'll have to defer to John Davis as the manager.
I mean, because I think that's, that's an important question that needs to be answered, outside of the technical things that you're talking about.
Nobody in general is, is against affordable housing. You know, the idea of senior affordable housing, that's not something that I believe the Borough is against, it's certainly not something I'm against, or that I've heard Mr. Davis is against. Here, I understand that, you know, it's, it's senior affordable housing. I understand that the applicant is saying that they will cater this development to veterans, and I, I think that's an important thing, veteran housing. I will note, though, with regard to, to tax credit programs, and I assume the tax credits that they're getting, there really is no requirement that this actually be rented out to veterans. So I would just be careful in your understanding of whether that is something that they're actually obligated to do.
Well, I said senior affordable housing. I know it cannot be, it can be marketed to veterans, and we've seen that in Bristol, in 21 days, they had 50% veterans, so they clearly know how to market to veterans. I'm just asking if the Borough, and maybe John can answer that, if the Borough is in favor of senior affordable housing? We'll take the veteran part out for right now.
Sure. I'm glad I got a chance to be up here. I've been your neighbor for 34 years, this is the first time I've ever formally addressed the Township Board of Supervisors, so you've allowed me to check something off my municipal bucket list. In answer to Ryan's question, yes, we struggle like you do with the issue of affordable housing, with the issue of senior housing, and certainly the veterans component is an important one here that adds even more to it. What, what we're here to do tonight, to provide some context, and I know Andrew provided some details on some of the issues we have with the ordinance as it's currently constituted, we're really talking about process at this point. We want to go through a process that looks like the processes that we've gone through before. We've been, as I said, I've been at this for 34 years. I think during that time, we've had an enviable relationship as, as neighboring municipalities, one that's, I don't think anyone can, anyone can perhaps surpass it. During that time, we've used that relationship, we've done cooperative projects, like the bike hike path, we've integrated our water systems, we've developed a bus service. The biggest challenges we've had during that time have always been private development on the boundaries of our community, whether on one side or the other, or actually astride the boundary as this one is. We go back to the farm, which Barbara may remember, Doylestown Hunt, the recent Wawa project, the YMCA. We've managed to work through those with what I believe has always been a mutually beneficial cooperative process that's allowed both communities and their residents to participate in a meaningful way. What we're asking tonight is that we apply that same process to this, this development because it has so many implications. We have a lot of very serious, specific concerns about this, no doubt. We are catching up a bit and aren't prepared, although we can try to address some of those things tonight if you'd like to.
Were you not, were there not meetings? Kelly said...
We've met many times on a staff level with the applicants, I will say that for sure. And we've expressed our concerns, and we've been unable to overcome some of those concerns. We were looking for and preparing for what we assumed would be parallel processes in the Borough and Township because of the split property.
What do you mean by parallel processes, John?
There were elements of this project that were located within the Borough, and there were elements of this project that were located within the Township, meaning that there would be presentations presumably before both Planning Commissions, before both boards, there would be a public process on both sides of the border, if you will, that we could each participate in the other. At a certain point, and I understand that, the applicant saw our concerns, didn't feel like they could overcome them, and essentially pulled the entire project out of the Borough and onto the Township property. And once, we learned that basically when this process that we're involved in tonight started. We've been playing catch-up then. We, we admit that we were expecting a more formal application ultimately that we would deal with in that basis. Because of the way the applicant's chosen to move forward on a township-only basis, we have not had the opportunity to participate, we think, in a meaningful way during these discussions. What we'd like, and what we're requesting, is that you follow the, what we think is the pretty clear recommendation of both the Bucks County Planning Commission and your own Planning Commission, and remand this to the Bucks County, or to your own Planning Commission, and let us participate as a municipality and address our concerns in a more, in a forum that's more set up for that. We hope that that results in an outcome that provides senior affordable housing, no doubt, but we also would hope that our concerns could be addressed on that basis. So tonight, we'd like to confine ourselves simply to a request, to do what we've done in the past, to create a process that's transparent, that allows both communities to participate, and give us some time to do that, and hopefully, we'll be back here in, in what can be a fairly short period of time with an address, a concern that we both, no doubt, both municipalities share this concern.
Okay, thanks, John. Kelly, do you need to respond to anything?
I just want to note that unless I was reading something wrong, I didn't read the Bucks County Planning Commission's memo as massive concerns. There was a few technical things, but I read it as a, they were very positive of this.
Ryan, that's what I was going to note. So just a couple corrections. Number one, right, there, there were not serious, quote, "serious" concerns raised in the Bucks County Planning Commission review letter. Second thing I just want to point out is what Mr. Griffin confirmed, is that there is no reasonable ability to develop affordable housing in the Doylestown Township zoning ordinance currently. That's the whole point of the amendment. Yes, the R2 zoning district requirements are far different, far different, because it's a single-family development and where multifamily is permitted, it is a far different area of the township, far different district, and far different regulations. So there is a very specific reason why the use and the accompanying dimensional requirements are set forth in the ordinance in the manner that they are. The only other thing I'd like to add is that there are, as part of this hearing, other members of the public who I know would appreciate an opportunity to speak. Madam Chair, when you get to that point, I would just ask if you can take public comment.
Okay, absolutely.
Thank you.
But you, Kelly, are you adverse to, what is your position on, you know, putting, putting this aside, letting the two Planning Commissions talk and, and get together on their, on the differences or the concerns that the Borough has with the...
Say, we tried to do that. We were told that the Borough was not interested in the project. After that, we went to the Borough Planning Commission. That was in May of this year, after we came to the Township to present, you know, what ultimately became this concept and ordinance. And frankly, the Borough Planning Commission was, was favorable, but it was a courtesy visit to, you know, provide the Borough Planning Commission with the point that we'd gotten to that time. But, you know, I will tell you, if it, if it wasn't a hard stop, we would still be having that conversation. That is, again, CI zoning ordinance, it would require a zoning ordinance amendment, and if, you know, that was something we were told was not going to happen in Doylestown Borough. So we've moved forward, again, with the township process in order to keep the project going. My fear is that, knowing how these processes go, it's been three years, there are a lot of land development issues. I think the concerns, if that's what we're talking about, the concerns, are land development concerns, and we can talk about traffic studies and, and density and setbacks and things like that in that process, that's the whole purpose of that process. But if you are actually truly in favor, and this is, keep in mind, the township, the township having an affordable use, I don't see what we're going to do in a further process other than walk that back.
Kelly, I think you mentioned that you had reviewed the Bucks County Planning Commission report, and I think you emailed me late today that you felt that if the town supervisors were inclined to approve the ordinance, be subject to the modifications in 2A, B, C, E, F, G, and I of the Bucks County Planning Commission report, am I right?
Yes, that's correct.
And that's the motion that I, that I made.
Yes, it is.
The Planning Commission also had concerns about some of the deed restrictions. It was, there's a 30-year deed restriction, they thought that that was awfully short, and would like to think about how extending that. I'm not sure if that falls into this, this conversation that you had with the Bucks County Planning Commission.
Yeah, no, Jen, I'm glad you brought that up. So it's 40 years in this...
The updated version?
Yeah, so the updated version is 40. I will also point out that what this ordinance does, as opposed to an ordinance that will just permit affordable housing in, like, a multifamily development, for example, this actually builds the affordability requirement into the zoning ordinance. So it is a zoning requirement to have a minimum affordability level and an age-qualified, irrespective of what the deed restriction says. So that's, I think, something that sets this ordinance apart from some other affordability projects where you just have, as I said before, affordable housing coming into just your standard multifamily zoning classification.
I just have to say that our Planning Commission is a very thoughtful group, and they, they did feel like they would like for us to table this so that they could have more of a conversation. I don't think, I mean, it would hold up the project for another month, right? So after three years, I know another month is not, not the best outcome for you, but like I said, I don't think anybody's opposed to having affordable senior veteran housing at all. I think they just want to make sure they have their i's dotted and t's crossed.
Do we want to take public comment?
Yeah, I do want to take public comment. Any other comments?
I, I do have a few things. Ms. Miguel, earlier you mentioned that this project had been looked at as, for like, high-rise luxury apartments. Was that by the same contractor you're representing today?
Correct, it was, yes, the same.
So you're going to have to forgive me for feeling like this is a little bit, let's find the right words, that we have people to support this project, veterans, affordable housing, all that, all of which we support on this board, but like, you know, it does raise a bit of an eyebrow, why are you asking us to change the ordinance to get this through? That applies not to just this property, but to other places as well. So I, I have a bit of a concern that this isn't coming from a place of our Planning Commission recommending this, that it's coming from a developer who seems to want to just put something on this property.
So if I understand correctly, and I want to answer this correctly, and I should let my client answer this, too, after hearing the comments, and as I said, over, over the past three years, Arcadia, and Jason Duckworth is here, and he can certainly speak for himself, brought in a partner, a second developer into the project who specializes, who only does affordable housing projects. This is, and I will speak for Jason, the first time that Arcadia has partnered in this manner. Jason and I have both, over the past year, in working with Penrose, learned a lot, and I will say with conviction, this is not a situation where there's a developer just trying to make money and put a project in.
All right. My other comments that I have echo what Supervisor Herring said of, I spoke with a member of our Planning Commission this morning, and some of the concerns about just making sure that this is the right thing for all of our light industrial units, not just this one. And as, and I also had several members of Borough Council in Doylestown reach out to me, very concerned about the project suddenly, to the point of, why are you doing this? Why are we going through with this? I'm like, whoa, 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 the only thing I've seen up to this, up to this meeting was a proposal for this. So there, you know, there is a concern there, and it faces Broad Street, that's Doylestown Borough, they're going to face the burden, and I'm not saying they get to dictate what we as a township do, but I, I would be willing to extend a courtesy of tabling it for a month or two. And that's not to say I don't, I'm not supportive of the idea of the project, but I want to make sure we're going through the proper channels with our neighbors and with our own Planning Commission.
Okay. All right, please.
Good evening, I'm Pete Scott. I am the commander of Albert R. Atkinson Jr., Post 210 of the American Legion in Doylestown. In our building, we have the American Legion, obviously, meet, we have the VFW, we have the Veterans of Foreign Wars, which is, have the... obviously, meet. We have the VFW. We have the Veterans of Foreign Wars, which is, the full name of that. The Marine Corps League, the Disabled Veterans, and the Vietnam Veterans. There's quite a bit of cross-pollination between us. Example, the commander of the Marine League happens to be my sergeant of arms. So, we kind of know each other. And we, I heard a lot about the affordable, and the affordable really is important. When we had a membership renewal last year, to let you know how tight it is for some members, we had a yearly dues increase from $40 to $45. Not much, probably not much to anybody in the room. We lost 12 members. They couldn't afford it. Looking at the position of where this place is proposed to be, when I look at the members of our group, we have guys that are suffering from Agent Orange from Vietnam. They go under cancer treatments. They're, you know, they do walk around, but kind of slowly. We have burn agent guys from the burn pits, same problem with the cancer. I look at my executive committee, there isn't a single one of us that doesn't have some mobility issues, whether it be back, knees, or something like that. So, we did see a lot there about the affordable. Obviously, that is very important to us. But it's also important that these guys can walk around town. I also happen to do meals on wheels. And I see some of these people in the rest homes, and they're stuck in their house. They can't go anywhere. There is nowhere to walk to. So, they have food brought in. This would be a perfect location.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Scott, before you leave, can I just, I'm sorry, one question for you. You mentioned your members that have had issues with the burn pits and Agent Orange and that kind of thing. One comment that was raised to me as a concern about this project is the Superfund site, just kind of down the road from that. I was wondering if there's any concern from your members or from yourself about that specific issue?
I was unaware of that. So, I really can't answer that at all. You know, but then again, you're looking at, you know, what is the impact of that? What is the reality of it? You know, if you look at some of the OSHA regulations, EPA regulations, they tend to be very cautious.
Right. And just to be clear, like, it is being remediated through the EPA, but I wasn't sure if, like, your members might have specific concerns about that.
Actually, it was kind of the opposite. I had members actually send me information, hey, tell me more about this.
Okay. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is David Moore. I've been a resident of our community for some 26 years now. This proposed development caught my attention because, as you can see by the weight on the top of my head, I'm a senior. But what you may not be able to see visibly is that I'm also a Vietnam veteran. And I'd like to remind all of you here tonight that we had many wonderful, brave veterans who came home from World War II and Korea, and more recently, the wars in Iraq and Afghanistan. And those veterans were received by their countrymen with open arms. Us Vietnam veterans were greeted with people spinning on us, people knocking over wheelchairs with Vietnam veterans in them. We were called baby killers and war criminals. We lost 58,000 Vietnam veterans were killed, 404,000 wounded. So, when this project, when I saw this project, it certainly piqued my interest. And I don't have just a passing interest in this. I'm also a business owner here in town. So, I would never advocate for anything in our community that I thought might be detrimental. I'd like to tell you a real short story about a longtime resident of our community. Her name is Janet Walker. Janet Walker was a nurse trained at Johns Hopkins Nursing School. Janet Walker is a Vietnam veteran. Janet Walker was a nurse at the 95th Evacuation Hospital in Da Nang, South Vietnam. That place has significance for me because my last mission in Vietnam was to put a 20-year-old young man in a body bag, drag him into a helicopter, and deliver him to 95th Evacuation Hospital. Now, I only had to be there maybe two or three times during my tour. Janet Walker was there day in, day out, trying to put young men and women back together who suffered from the ravages of a very unpopular war. Janet Walker is someone who would qualify to move into this development. I just want to, I'd like to ask you all here tonight to examine your hearts. There's a housing shortage, especially among Vietnam veterans. When we came home, our countrymen turned their backs on us. Please, don't do that again. Thank you.
Hi. My name is Aaron Zappi. I'm Director of Government Affairs for the Housing Alliance of Pennsylvania. We're a statewide nonprofit organization that advocates for policies to increase affordable housing in the Commonwealth. But I'm also speaking as a local resident of Bedminster Township. So, our housing crisis has definitely had an outsized impact on senior citizens. And over and over again, we're seeing land use policies, the number one barrier to alleviating this problem in the communities that are best situated to have these projects with the best accessibility to services, to transportation, walkability. These same meetings, these same meetings in townships and cities from Erie to Delaware County, Pittsburgh, to Philadelphia, the same conversations are taking place. We need to build affordable housing. We all support it. We all love the idea, but, and there's always a but, but maybe not here, maybe not now. And as we heard, it's never ideal. It's never perfect. There's always going to be some concerns, some little issues to iron out. The state legislature's taken note of this. And both Senate Republicans and House Democrats, both announced forthcoming legislation to address zoning reform, to address land use policies, and, you know, varying degrees and having a little bit different take from either chamber. But the issue is statewide. And, you know, I want to thank this board for, first of all, considering, considering this, you know, this measure. And that shows, you know, quite a degree of concern about the issue and leadership. And, you know, I think that, you know, we can go a long way here in, you know, providing our friends and neighbors who have worked in our community, have volunteered, have served their country a place to age in dignity. So, I asked the board for a yes vote. Thank you.
Anybody else from out there?
Sure. Chris?
Good evening everyone. I'm Chris Halsky. I'm the Chair for the Veteran Advisory Committee for the Township. And as stated earlier, we did have a great ceremony the other day. And I'm humbled to be the Chair of that committee and be honored that the Board of Supervisors, the Township, and the Borough are all geared towards, and know the importance of having affordable housing for our residents and our veterans. And like stated by many of us, it's never the best place to put something. But to think, what else are we going to put into that, that location that would just sit anyway? I think if we just all work together and play in the sandbox together nicely, we can work through these things that have arisen, these concerns, to benefit those we're actually trying to reach, the regular residents and the, our veterans. So, that's my two cents.
Thanks, Chris. Judy, do you have anything to add?
In particular, you, the impact this use would have on the other districts, similar districts?
In the other two sections of the LI?
Yes.
Just one second. I do have a little... We did look at that because this is a use that would be added into the LI district. There is a walkability component to this.
A walk, what?
A walkability component.
Thank you.
So, that in the language for the draft ordinance, there's a component requirement that it needs to be walkable and near specific service, services and areas for the residents to be able to access. But in addition to that, we did look at the other two areas of LI district. This area is along the North Broad Street Corridor, essentially from the bypass area down to, down to the Tilly property in question, encompassing the Thompson property, the other Tilly properties, some properties in between going up toward the IU. The other area, the second area of LI in the Township is along Weldon, the area of the school district and some parcels in there, that is significantly developed. Now, things can be redeveloped and adaptively reused, as we know, but that area would not meet the walkability components. And the third area of LI is the area that's been referenced already, the Grosso tract, which de facto has become, already approved for senior housing, not senior affordable, but senior housing. And there is no walkability component down there to other goods and services. But that wouldn't qualify for this because there's no walkability component, and that's already been approved by the stipulated agreement and preliminary plan. So, we have looked at those areas. And we have looked at this ordinance. I agree that the technical components of the BCPC, Bucks County Planning Commission letter, can be addressed. I've seen the redline version that Ms. McGowan spoke of earlier, and so did Mr. Garten. And I believe they can be addressed. So, technically, they can be addressed. And the ordinance has merit and deserves consideration. And of course, it's what the board wants to do with this.
Do you, do you understand the concerns of the borough that they're raising? Do you have any questions?
I understand the concerns of the borough, and I respect their concerns. I did not have access to the letter that was mentioned. Apparently, the borough sent a letter to the Township outlining their concerns. I have not had the ability to read that or review that. I understand what I've heard while attending the Planning Commission meeting and the limited information they presented tonight. I do understand that traffic is an issue. I understand that the lack of additional industrial along that corridor is a concern to the borough. I think there are answers and responses and discussion that could, could occur. I'm not sure that sending it back to Planning Commission would ever resolve those issues. I think that at some point, there's going to be a difference of opinion. And that's what happens eventually when things come to a vote.
Thank you.
Judy, could you just elaborate a little bit? What do you mean by the walkability component, not applying to the other two areas, but to the one being discussed, how that...
Sure. Let me get that phrase in front of me.
Yeah. I guess my concern is, does that mean we're almost creating like a, two different classes of L1 if we were to approve this ordinance?
No, the LI is the limited industrial.
Oh, LI, sorry.
And we wouldn't be creating two classes. This one use would not necessarily be permitted unless, unless the property in question meets the criteria set forth for that use. Do you need me to get that sentence up for you?
No, I think that's all I just need clarified. Thank you.
Yeah. It's like any other use or any other property, unless you meet the area dimensional requirements and the requirements of that use, you don't get to use it.
So, can I ask a question? So, does this ordinance have to happen in order for them to qualify on a federal level and a state level for any, is that, so that's why you need the ordinance versus just going through variances? Is that correct?
The use would need to be permitted in some way in order for the applicant to pursue the permitting, to get the credits from the program. I'm not sure that it's a stipulation it has to be permitted by right. I'm not aware of in what way. But in some way, the variance would then permit it. But a use variance is a very high threshold for proving that hardship. And some would argue that use variances are not appropriate.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Other public comment?
Man walked up. Wait a minute.
Wait. Sir?
Go ahead, sir.
Good evening. For those of you who don't know me, I'm Bob Campbell. And we own property on the north end of the park, and Campbell Insurance Agency across here. I've served as President of the Doylestown Pilots Association. I helped build the Doylestown Hospital, was on the board for many years. And I'm a five-year Navy veteran. I served during the Cuban Missile Crisis. I signed up for four years. And when the missile crisis came, they extended this for another year. Wasn't our choice, but happy to do it. I'm in favor of affordable housing, as we all are. And I'm in favor of doing whatever we can for veterans, as I believe we all are. I also own a lot of property in the borough, as you probably know. And I've been blessed in my life to be able to do some pretty nice things. I would encourage you to do this project. What a great place for it. You can walk to everything. And that's what's needed for the veterans and seniors. And I think you all know the good part of it. So, find a way to make it work, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Sir?
Good evening, Board. Jason Duckworth with Arcadia Land Company. It's good to be before you this evening. I just wanted to answer the specific question about the timing and the requirement for zoning. So, there are tax credit applications, and part of the evaluation of those tax credits is whether there is zoning in place. Tax credit applications that have zoning in place are, get additional points and are favored in this competitive process. The next deadline for filing this kind of affordable housing tax credit application would be in January. And so, that's why, you know, the time is of the essence. I'd just like to make a couple additional comments in response to the borough's concerns. I consider myself a good friend of the borough. We've had the great pleasure of working with them very constructively over the last five years on two projects that are part of this greater Broad Street Corridor. We were able to bring to Doylestown the Martin, which is 59 luxury apartments, where the rents exceed $5,000 in some cases. We're building 10 luxury elevator townhouse buildings where the prices will exceed 1.2 million. Before those projects, of course, the Intelligencer Project was approved. Lantern Hill was an industrial conversion to 117 market rate units. Belvedere was 34 market rate units. industrial conversion to 117 market rate units. Belvedere was 34 market rate units. In total, the Borough has approved 450 luxury units, including my own. Considering tonight, though, is the first opportunity for people to become part of the revitalization of Broad Street who can't afford luxury housing, whether it be rental or for sale. Your action is not the end of the process. Your action simply creates an opportunity for us to compete for tax credits and to then get into the details of land development with both the Township and the Borough. The Borough has to be a part of the land development process because the access to the affordable housing is through the Borough. The utilities will be through the Borough. There's no way we can't get our way around working with our good friends at the Borough, as we've done very constructively over the last five years. Our goal of this project is to do something that'll be a credit to us all, to the Township, to the Borough, to my company and my partners at Penrose. We want to create something that we can truly be proud of, a mixed-use, mixed-income community. We'd rather not see the affordable housing for Doylestown Township end up in a drivable location remote from services. We think this location is extraordinarily appropriate for it. Right across the street, if I stand at 280 North Broad and I look across the street, I'm now looking at four stories of luxury housing coming out of the ground, built at 31 units to the acre. Our proposal would be just 24 units to the acre. It would have a lesser traffic impact because low-income seniors don't drive much. They don't own cars. They actually need proximity to services. I find, you know, the Borough Solicitor made the comment that this has been a zoning ordinance, it's been tailored to a project, and there's no doubt that our project has inspired the drafting of this ordinance. But the same Intelligencer redevelopment, 333 North Broad Street, was done exactly the same way, and that ordinance that the Borough passed and what the project is now under construction was tailored to suit that situation. So, I don't think there's anything particularly unusual about working together with all parties to come up with an ordinance that will reasonably address the interests of all stakeholders. We would highly encourage you to take action on this so that we can compete in January and get the tax credits and bring this kind of housing to the community where it's desperately needed. Thank you.
What is your, what is your response to the Borough that say you need to work with them now in order to fix whatever the problems they have with this?
So, my concern with that is that we met in the spring, two staff meetings, one in April, one in May, and we were told in no uncertain terms that the Borough did not support any residential on the west side of Broad Street. So, we have a difference of opinion on that as a matter of public policy. Already, there's residential on the west side of Broad Street. If you look at both sides of Thompson Detailing, there are residential units, homes that have been divided up into apartments, and we left those meetings with the conclusion that we had to agree to disagree, that we thought that the beautiful new Broad Commons Park should not just be for those who can afford luxury rents. It should be also for those who can't necessarily do so. We did go to the Planning Commission of the Borough in May and had a very successful meeting. The chairman was inviting us back for land development, but of course, two weeks later, learned at the staff level that our proposal would not be entertained any further. So, you know, we interact with the Borough on a monthly basis, if not more often, because of our two active projects, and that's been a very successful, very constructive relationship. I enjoy talking with staff, but I'm struggling to understand where the room for compromise is here, when the message we were last delivered was, we don't support any residential on the west side of Broad Street.
Is that true, John?
Our last position with the applicant was that we did not support, we did not see room for residential on the Borough tract where the current Tilly building sits, and we felt that it was appropriate to be redeveloped as a commercial site.
You thought it was appropriate to what?
I didn't hear you. Be developed as a commercial site.
We felt it was appropriate to be redeveloped as a commercial site, as it currently zoned in the Borough.
Your parcel.
That's correct.
Okay.
That's correct. In terms of the Township site, as I said, we basically said, you know, you can work with the Township on that. As I said, what we're looking for is a meaningful opportunity to participate in that process before the zoning change takes place, so that we can address our concerns with residential zoning.
So, you don't want residential where your parcel is? Is that what you're saying?
We were presented with a proposal for luxury townhouses, the for-profit, I guess, aspect of this project, on the Tilly, I'll call it that. We call it the Tilly property because that's where the existing, existing Tilly building was, on that part of the site. We did not feel like that was an appropriate location for a townhouse development.
So, now we have this. Do you still think this is not an appropriate location for this affordable housing notion?
I'm sorry, the Township portion you're talking about?
No, your portion.
Our portion, no. We don't believe that the front portion is appropriate for a townhouse developer.
And the Township portion, what is your opinion about that?
We're open to what the Township is, the Township is reviewing residential development and wants to look at that. We want an opportunity to participate in that, but we're not completely adverse to residential development on the rear of that property, no.
Okay, so unless, as I understand it, your parcel is necessary for us to, for this zoning amendment?
That's correct. It is, it does permit access to the site.
So, you never have to agree to it?
I would defer to my solicitor and to-
I just don't understand if we're going to be going through a useless process here if you're never going to allow that parcel to be developed with this, with this project.
I'm not saying that, Barbara. I'm saying that-
I'm asking. I mean, why delay it if that's going to be, if that's your position?
Yeah, I agree. That's my concern. If we table this for a month, does anything change? If we're tabling it, we'd like to see like meaningful conversation happen, not just come back in a month and everyone's in the same position.
What I've referred to is the Borough portion of the site, which is not the subject of the zoning application that's before you. We had conversations with the developer that included the last iteration, luxury townhouses or for-profit townhouses on the Borough portion of the site. We informed the developer that we did not feel that that was appropriate and something that we could rally to with regard to the Borough portion of the site, and that our preference and that our feeling was that it could be redeveloped, that portion of the site in its current zoning, and could be done in a way that was, that was acceptable and doable. As far as the rear portion of the site, obviously, they need to access through that site. I would defer to the solicitor and the planner in terms of what leverage we carry in terms of having to cross that site to access the Township portion, but I don't believe anyone in the Borough is under any illusions that we can, that we can somehow block development of the rear of the property through the Borough portion. Obviously, we'll have to work with the developer on how to cross that property, but what we're looking for is a way to help shape and participate and have our say in the underlying zoning ordinance that will govern the rear portion of the site in the Township, which we understand has a residential component or will have a residential component. We feel like the best way to do that is before the zoning ordinance is approved, such that if there are changes necessary, they can be made. Once the zoning ordinance is moved forward, we're working within that context, and we can't.
So, if I'm understanding what the request is, if we were to table this motion, you have no intention of changing your plans with your portion of the property, but you would like to be able to provide some input into our discussion process for changing our zoning process?
Correct. We're actually in the process of having our planning staff do an analysis of the proposal in order to present that to you and your Planning Commission, so that we can, again, have a say in some of the concerns we have with the ordinance that Andrew's laid out, and some of the concerns with the development itself, so.
So, it would still fall to us, what we want to do with it. It's just a matter how long do we want to give additional input from our Planning Commission and from the Borough on it as well?
I don't see their position changing.
And what's the hesitation for you not to make it residential? I mean, you've just put in all these luxury, we've got a lot of revenue coming into the Borough.
I think part of the issue, you know, obviously, Mr. Davis, he's the manager for the Borough. He doesn't make the decisions behalf of the zoning hearing board or Borough Council itself.
I didn't know, I didn't know your planning conversation. I'm curious what the conversations have been, basically. I didn't-
So, that conversation we had with Borough Council, they authorized us to prepare a report to discuss the plans as they've now been submitted. We're in the process of preparing that for them, for discussion with them, as well as yourself.
That's correct.
Right, because I remember, I think I was at that meeting where it was like the two townhomes that were like, going to be what, 600 each, and then in the back, there was going to be, right?
Yeah, there were going to be the-
And then there was going to be the affordable in the back.
Correct.
And now you pulled that out.
Yeah, it's basically shifted back.
Yep.
It has slowly shifted away from the Borough tract, to the point that it's not addressed before you. It's, the current proposal is basically silent on that. As I said, we are preparing, and as Andrew has laid out, we have been asked by Council to prepare a planning analysis. It includes traffic. It includes provision of water. It includes-
So, I think you can see there's an appetite from the Township to address veterans' needs.
Absolutely.
Affordable housing needs. I'm not sure I'm in favor of changing an entire ordinance. I'm concerned with what Jen said, because there's other, you know, L1s. I don't know, is this the only time you can apply for a tax credit? Is that why you have to wait another year, or is it quarterly that you can apply? Is it quarterly? I mean, that's honestly, like, that's my, I don't like being put on a timeline. I think it makes sense to look at it, like, at the height and some of those concerns. I also want to be a good neighbor to the Borough, and I certainly, I'm looking at every veteran, and I'm, and, you know, Brian's our advocate, and I think it's the right thing to do from an affordable and from a veteran perspective, but I don't think, I think we have to separate that from the, what you're asking us to do in terms of what the L1 is, and make sure it's done right, so that there isn't the issues with parking, there isn't the issues with alleyways, and so we can be that good neighbor, so we don't find that problem later on. So, I-
I just, I just have to say, thank you, Nancy. I just have to say, I, I'm, I'm trying to be optimistic here about the legitimacy of people saying they support senior affordable housing for our veterans, but I think we're getting caught up in a lot of minutia, and when I know that there has been commercial properties, that usage has been changed for luxury, I mean, the developer has said, he has built luxury units, that the ordinance was changed. And so, what I get worried about is this drag-on, 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 and then the project gets killed, because at the end of the day, there are people that probably don't really want this affordable housing within our community, and I think that's really, really sad. And I'm not, I'm not, you know, downplaying the Planning Commission, our Planning Commission, I respect them and their time and effort they want to put into this, but I think there's time for that thoughtful discussion, once we can like move forward. Like, again, it's usage versus planning, right? This is just changing the usage so we can go forward and start talking about all of these things. And when we look at Bucks County's Planning Commission, who again, put together a memo in favor of this, you know, there's, they're in favor of this with some technicalities. I just, I don't know. I get, I get a little bit nervous that, that there's ulterior motives outside of just, hey, we want to make sure we're doing this right, and the setbacks here, and, you know, all of that.
Yeah, I mean, I understand that, and I absolutely see that in other communities, especially, we've seen, you know, a lot of NIMBY stuff, you know. And I just want to make sure it's very, very clear that this project isn't what's up for discussion right at this moment. It is not, I think there's a desire from everybody on the board to have affordable properties in the Township. We've talked about it over and over and over. The Planning Commission is a dedicated commission who have often said that we need to review and understand our needs for workforce housing, affordable senior housing. We have had these discussions, but that's not, that's not actually what's in front of us right now. What's in front of us is the minutia. It's the setbacks. It's the height of the buildings. They don't match. The requirements just don't match. And although I understand it can be done, we can work our way around it. There's a way that it should go through the process, and that's looking through the Planning Commission and having them evaluate the different ordinances and how, how we can integrate them, so that it does come to the vision of a comprehensive plan, so that we can achieve what we've been looking for. Like I said, the Planning Commission is not opposed to this, as far as I can tell, sitting there. It seems like they're very, very interested in this type of building, and this actual location is a very good location for that. The walkability part, though, I do, I am interested in understanding the walkability part, but we can add that to another discussion. Just currently, the walkability is not, the other LI districts aren't, don't qualify for the walkability, but that doesn't mean in the future they couldn't. So, so if you're looking long-term, I think that that's something that you have to consider, too, that although they might not qualify, they may in the future.
Well, there's one more Planning Commission meeting on December 18th.
Seventeenth?
December 17th through 18th. And our next meeting is at the 18th, 19th. So, why don't you just take that one more meeting, see how, you know, work it out, and then we'll have, we'll look at this again on the 19th.
Let's table it to a date certain, December 19th, so there's no re-advertising required. Can we do that, please, through motion to do so?
Okay, sure. We'll give you this gentleman an opportunity to speak.
Hi, sorry, I had to jump in. My name's Steve Marzullo. I've been a resident of Bucks County for 40 years in here, here in Central Bucks, but more importantly, and in the real estate industry for 30 years, so I know about zoning and real estate development. But I am the Chair of the Bucks County Housing Development Corp. Been the Chair for 10 years, been on the board for 12 years, and we have about 150 units of affordable senior housing. That's what we do. We rent apartments to seniors, low-income seniors. These are all tax credit-created projects over the years. We started back in the 90s, and we have one in New Hope, one in Percasie, one in Ben Salem, none here in Central Bucks. And it's been impossible to find a site, a piece of land, a building, a project that we can get involved with. We have 150 units, all occupied. The issue compared to what this group wants to do and maybe add to the zoning is, our income requirements are higher, and we don't, we don't control it. We have to turn away a lot of seniors, a lot of seniors that are living off of just their social security income. And there's projects that can be done that can help them. We have to send them to, we have wait lists as well. We never have a vacant unit. As soon as we can turn it, someone's there to rent it. The other, the other agencies, the Bucks County Housing Authority, Gloria Day, Cornwell Heights, all these others that we refer seniors to, that don't qualify for our buildings, two-to-three year wait lists, just like you're hearing. And while they're waiting, they're living in hotels, they're living in shelters, they have to live with their kids, you know, as long as they can, and it's very difficult. It's very difficult. So, we're doing everything we can. I also chair the Bucks County Industrial Development Authority, and right now, we have as small as a 13-unit project that we're trying to buy down in Bristol Township, where all of this is. None's up here. And we're working with the IDA, the HDC, the Housing Authority. We're all trying to figure it out, because no one else is doing it. And here you have groups that are trying to do it. And it should be a really welcome thing. I mean, my church is right up the street, St. Paul's, from where this project is. My favorite restaurants, I can walk from this project to my favorite restaurant. It's, and this park. I'm here three days a week with my wife. So, all these great things that we have in the Borough, in the Township, but this is something we need, and that's all, I'm here about the need. Thank you.
Where were we? Oh, I think this gentleman. Was there one more comment? Okay. Was there one more comment? Okay.
Yes. My name is Greg Richardson. I'm with Traffic Planning and Design. We've been hired by the developer to look at some of the early projections for traffic, projections for this particular land use. As you know, this is LI, which, you know, could allow, you know, heavier uses, such as, that would have truck use, heavy truck use. And what we have before you now is, if you were to look at the hierarchy of residential uses, usually you'll see your single-family homes or your higher generators. And, and was earlier stated by Jason, is that the, this particular use is one of the most, is at least intensive when it comes to traffic. So therefore, if you're, if you're considering the impacts of what this development will be on your local roadway networks, as well as the burrows, is, we are looking at it from that aspect, too. We'll have to do traffic studies to support the development, the proposal. But rest assured that what you have from a traffic standpoint, this is one of your less intense uses that you could actually put on a roadway or put on a piece of property, because for much of the reasons we said earlier, the residents tend not to have vehicles. They tend to use local transportation and walk. And we hope, and there's the walkability component here. So, don't mean to belabor some of the issues we have, but I felt, you know, I'm the traffic guy here. I've got to earn my money tonight somehow.
[laughing]
So, so if you have any particular questions for me, you know, other than that, I'll thank you for your time.
Yeah, I think further on in the process, we will be talking about traffic issues, right?
I'm sure we will.
Thank you.
Motion, if it's to be made, should be made to table, consideration of the ordinance to the meeting on December 19, 2023.
Can, I mean, can I just see if I can get a second to my motion?
Sure.
Okay. I don't know if I will, but-
You made a motion.
Yeah.
She made the motion to approve the additional use to, I changed the ordinance to approve the, improve, approve the additional use.
Pursuant to-
Incorporating those comments.
Pursuant to the planning commission's comments. Yeah.
Yes. I am going to second that motion, and I'm seconding it because every single member of this board has expressed an agreement for affordable housing. We have a location for it. This additional, this ordinance would provide the location and allow the location to be on our property, on township property, on the Broad Street corridor. I realize that it has to work in conjunction with a borough parcel, and I would hope that that would, that would come to, come to be. But I think since we all are in agreement that we want affordable housing, and this is a good location for affordable housing, this ordinance amendment allows for that, I think the rest of it will all work itself out. I think if we, we're going to have a planning commission meeting on the 18th of December, and all those bits and pieces can come together, the borough should be there. And really, I don't understand why this, this shouldn't work. I don't understand why this can't work. And, you know, we're all smart people. We all have the same idea in mind. Build something that people can afford, especially our seniors and our veterans. So this is a great location. This is a, I know there's some issues with the ordinance, how it's ordered. I think all that can be worked out. So I am, I'm seconding the motion to approve this as it is, based on the idea that it's all going to be worked out at the next planning commission meeting.
Cast a vote.
So I'm second. Calling the question.
Aye.
All in favor?
Nay.
Nay.
Okay. So that fails. There's a motion now for table?
Should be a motion to table to December 19, 2023.
I'll make that motion.
One second.
Aye. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, good. So that passes, but please, everybody, the idea is to make this happen, and hopefully, borough guys, we will make this happen. There's a planning commission meeting on the 18th, right?
Mm-hmm.
Bring your planning people to this planning meeting, and then let's see if we can get this done on the 19th.
What's the timeline for the tax credit application?
January.
You know?
January 11th.
What's it?
January 11th.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
It'll be a long holiday.
Thank you, everybody. We're still have more stuff on this agenda, I think.
The next item, I don't know if anybody's here from Chaffan New Britain or not.
Thank you all for coming.
Chaffan New Britain would like to put an additional facility at their location on Upper State Road. Staff has reviewed it. We recommend that you grant a waiver of land development, subject to executing a land development waiver agreement.
Should we, yeah?
Yeah. It's to provide sanitary sewer service-
All right.
Doesn't really affect anything.
I'll make the motion to approve the waiver.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
You did a great job. Thank you for your presentation.
You earned your money, as they say.
Ashbridge Resolution.
This is the planning module for Ashbridge at Furlong. This was a requirement as they're going through reviews with DEP.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
I'll make the motion to approve. I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, Community Recreation Center and Park Improvement Project, we have-
You missed the PICO Green-
Sorry, PICO, 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 sorry. Application for the PICO Green Regions Open Space Program Resolution 2023.
Sure.
A motion to approve.
Andrew was going to go over it with you. You wanted to just make a motion, but I was going to say something, but if it's not need.
Okay.
Go ahead. I'd like to hear what you have to say.
Oh, okay.
I guess she's not working tomorrow, obviously.
No, I'm cooking.
So this is a resolution as part of the application for the PICO Green Region Grant. We've submitted an application to replant 120 native plants and shrubs in Harts Woods. This particular grant is awarded in amounts up to $10,000 and may be used to fund 50% of the project. The recommended plant list was supplied by the vice chair of the EAC, Heidi Shiver, and totaled $4,544. So this resolution reflects the 50% to be funded by the township if we are awarded the grant.
50%.
I would like to make the motion to approve the application for the PICO Green Regions Open Space Program.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Andrea.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next is the Community Recreation Center. MKSD has a recommendation to award the low bidder Barry Islett for the necessary inspections. Have everyone had the opportunity to read this proposal? Is there a motion to approve the proposal?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Is that 5-0?
I'm sorry. Did you, I didn't vote. I didn't say anything. Sorry. I was, I was just reviewing it one more time. It's a nay.
Four and one. Okay, I don't know how to say, Ho Associates Recycling Contract.
How do you say Ho?
Huff.
Huff. Apologies. Is there a motion to approve the three-year agreement authorizing Huff Associates to collect residential commercial recycling data and prepare Pennsylvania Department of, Department of Environmental Protection, I know, for recycling grant application-
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Okay. The EAC Climate Action Plan Places of Worship Letter. I was confused.
Two representatives of the EAC are here tonight, and as you know, at the last meeting, they had, a couple meetings ago, presented and have sent letters to various businesses in the township about the climate action plan, and they've had some very positive response to that. They're now suggesting that we reach out to places of worship in the township as well.
How many are there? Temple Judea and who?
There's several. There's the one on Edison Furlong Road.
Oh, yeah, 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 sorry.
There's Temple Judea. There's also-
Sorry.
Two churches over. There's the Mennonite Church, Pine Run.
That's right.
There's probably about a half, four to five.
Can I, can I just, I, it's, fine, the letters should go, but I think if we could just add that it's not only our residents we're asking of this, we're asking also our commercial and retail partners. So that should be in there. Like, we're not only asking you, but we're asking our, everybody. So can we add that to this letter? Is that good? Is everyone okay with that?
Do we, do we know what the response rate has been with it, within the first letters that you sent out?
Kurt Sawyer for the EAC.
Here.
We've actually already had five meetings-
Thank you.
With various folks. We've met with a guy that owns shopping centers, a guy that owns office buildings, Del Valle, the Country Club, Doylestown Hospital. So we've had a huge and positive response rate to our letter that we did send out commercially. We also did a presentation at Del Valle as part of their One Health Series. If you want to see it, there's a link on, on the township website to that presentation. So this is going extremely well. This outreach to the religious institutions is just, in our view, a part of the outreach to the community, to fold them into it. Plus, frankly, there's money available to nonprofits now that didn't exist before. So this may be very interesting to them.
Thank you. Well, thanks for doing this.
Does this, can I ask, does this open us up to anything if we're reaching out to religious organizations?
No, you can, they're residents of the community. You're not doing any-
That's, that was my only-
Other businesses.
I just wanted to be sure. That's all. Okay.
Okay, next, you-
Are we gonna-
Vote on it, right?
Do you want to motion or can, do we have the board's consensus?
You just need a concurrence.
Yeah.
We have concurrents of the majority of the board to send that letter?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Thank you.
I'm sorry. I thought we had that. Concur. Okay. All right, then.
The budget.
The budget. It's with Senator Seppert. Is everyone okay with the preliminary budget that we received?
We do have information up on, I know we've been through, it's late evening, but we do have little presentation. Ed can go to the next slide. As always, we're putting together the budget in brief. That's just the first page of it. We'll have that for the December meeting, but it will show you the highlights. You also see the length of time that we have been spending since April with the board and the finance committee and staff to put the budget together. The next slide of the major improvements, the balance budget that we're doing using our reserves. We do have a tax increase for both debt service and for our roads and bridges, which will be one-time only. We have growth in our capital spending for our park improvements project, our trails and our stormwater. But at the end of the day, we, our results are that we continue to have strong reserves, double A1 rated community, and we are providing the necessary services to our community. The next couple pages, and I'll just do this, shows you the graphical of the revenues, the expenditures and the fringes in the budget, which the board has seen, as well as our capital spending. And lastly, our fund balances as we move forward into '24, and goes from there. We have our overall real estate millage, where we're going up the 2.7 mills. And finally, comparison of where we rated this year for other municipalities. I've also heard from a number, I saw today, that there will be increases in some of our other municipality, neighboring municipalities. And Ed, as you can continue to move through that, what it typically looks like, of course, the school district is always the largest component of a real estate tax bill. And finally, just to reiterate, we are having a balanced budget, utilizing some of our reserves. We do address the tax increase, our capital projects, and again, providing the services through the taxes to our community. And that's the conclusion on the budget. Any questions? Ken is here, as well as Ann Marie from our finance department, and we're happy to answer any questions.
Motion to authorize the advertisement of the proposed ordinance for possible final enactment at your December meeting.
Can I just ask, well, just make a statement? One, I appreciate you, all the work that the finance committee has done and all the information that's there. I do want to remind people, though, that the majority of the Rex Center projects, excuse me, is going to be financed by taxes versus the trails and things. We've been able to get grants. I am really appreciative of this chart showing the fundraising, so thank you for that. But I do think we are moving forward with this, and I understand that, that we need to be really mindful of some of the other things we've added into the projects. I mentioned some of those concerns at the budget meeting, and some of those things that are in the second and third and fourth year may not come to fruition, and I just think we need to be really realistic. We are dealing with high inflation. We are dealing with, we just talked about affordable housing. So if we're really going to talk the talk and, you know, offer affordable housing, we have to do it on the other end with our taxes. So I just really want to be mindful that that's a fair balance. That's all I wanted to say.
Okay. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye. That's 5-0. All right, all right. Now, there are a couple zoning hearing board applications. Goldman at 860, they want to add an accessory use. Any problem with that?
Yeah, leave that to the zoning hearing board, as well as the one for-
And Brixmore and the other.
Mm-hmm.
And Kaiser.
Kaiser, as well as the fence in the east.
Okay. Treasurer's Report, November 21st, 2023. Is there a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And then bills list for November 21st, 2023?
I'll make the motion to approve.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, this, the next meeting of this board is Tuesday, November 19th, at 7:00 PM. We're going to be closed Thursday and Friday, November 23rd and 24th for Thanksgiving. Veterans, this is Veterans Families and Military Families Month, so we have a few more days left to recognize that. Capital Campaign Raffle is continuing, it's $100, and we're going to pick the winner on December 19th. We're going to be doing, we have a food drop-off for Bucks County Housing Group between now and January 10th, and we're taking the foods from 8:30 AM to 4:30 PM. Civilian Response Act of Shooter, we heard from Sergeant Stitch. More information is at jstitch@doylestownpa.org. Township E-News is every Friday at 4 o'clock in your inbox. And Santa in the Park is Saturday, the 9th of December, 1 to 4, at the Pavilion. Any public comment on anything other than agenda items? Seeing nothing, we are adjourned. Thank you very much, everybody.